Ask to continue, you'll be the vote on that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
And Sher, just a reminder, I know it's tricky, but if you can mute numb yourself as the meeting goes on, it's not, it's not horrific.
All right, take care, thank you.
All right.
Ms. Bourbon, you are good, if you so, well, I'm sorry, we should let every, Sher, do you want to let everyone in? Or if you're ready, if you're ready.
Ready. All right, welcome everyone to the Situate Planning Board, Thursday, April 22nd, 2021. We are doing this via remote access, if you wish to see what we're doing, you go to our website and click on the prompts. And to ask a question or comment, once the meeting has started, click the icon labeled Participants at the bottom of your computer and so on, you can either raise a hand to ask a question during the Q and A. All right, our first item on the agenda is, first, I'd like to have a motion to accept the agenda, please.
I'll move.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Bourbon?
Yes.
Ms. Lampert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
All right, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing for Scenic Road 141 Driftway. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), the Scenic Road Act and Mass General Laws, Chapter 87, Section 3, Public Shade Trees, the Planning Board, in conjunction with the Tree Warden, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 22nd, 2021, at 6:30pm in the Selectment Board Hearing Room, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Mass. The subject of the hearing is the removal of a six-inch pine tree in the public right-of-way of Driftway for a proposed driveway for newly created lot for a single-family home at 141 Driftway for applicant Paul Sharon and owner John Tedeschi. Work is located on the Assessors Map, 64-10-12. Plans are available for review in the Planning Board Office, Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, by appointment only. Participation, public hearing for butters and other interested parties will be via remote access only. Okay. Let's see. Karen?
Why don't we have the applicant present first?
All right. The applicant is?
Thank you, Jeff Hassett here, civil engineer with Morse Engineering, on behalf of the applicant.
All right.
So this is a scenic road application for the property at 141 Driftway. The project involves two new driveways off of Driftway and requires a scenic road permit because of the removal of one six-inch evergreen within the layout of the road. Other than that, there are no other trees to be removed within the layout, nor are there any stone walls to be removed. So, producer, with that, I'll answer any questions, thank you.
Karen?
It's, we advertised for one six-inch pine, which I really think is a cedar tree that needs to be removed along the frontage in the right-of-way for the proposed driveway. The Acting Tree Warden has opined that it's okay to remove the tree, so I guess it's okay to remove the tree, and I would recommend that the Planning Board vote to remove it with, with conditions.
Hey. All right. Comments from the board? Patty? Whoever? Ben?
Oh, so I was just, I was just wondering if, as part of the removal of a replacement tree of similar species will be put, will be installed after the driveway's plan?
I did not write that into the draft conditions, if the board wants to add that as draft, then we, then we can add it.
Is that something you typically do on other projects?
Yes.
We have before, yes. Do you want me to add that to the motion?
Yes, please.
And where do you want this tree to be located?
Certainly in the, if it can go in the, somewhere on the lot, in the scenic sort of right-of-way, right? If that's what we're trying to preserve here. That would seem the right place to go.
Why don't we have them get the tree, and then you can go down, Karen, and tell them where you think it should go?
All right, I mean, right now, I've put a replace, here's a replacement six-inch cedar shall be located on the lot close to the right-of-way to be field-approved by the town planner?
Yes.
Karen, just to clarify, did you, did you say a replacement six-inch?
Yes.
That might be a little onerous.
Yeah.
To get a six-inch.
Probably a little large. I was gonna say three-inch, but it just seems like a six-inch cedar tree is probably very big, very expensive.
I'm sure you could buy one, but I'm not, I don't know where you even would.
But we, we thought maybe you just take it from another yard.
You wanna, you wanna spend, instead of doing a caliper, do you want to do a height?
I think that's better for an evergreen, that's usually how they're sourced.
For a height? Okay.
Maybe a six to seven, something that's gonna live, I think.
Yeah.
Six to eight foot?
Sure.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Okay. I move to close the Scenic Road Act Public Hearing and approve the removal of a six-inch pine cedar tree along the frontage of the property for future access for a proposed driveway for a single-family dwelling. The applicant will notify the town planner 48 hours before tree removal. This approval is contingent upon all federal, state, and local permits being obtained and is only for the single pine cedar tree removal. No trees or their roots in the Driftway right-of-way shall be disturbed for the installation of utilities or for grading. As well, a replacement of a six-to-eight-foot cedar/evergreen will be located and approved by the town planner. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Further discussion?
Just, just a question, it says cedar/evergreen?
Yes.
Don't we want it just to say cedar? I mean, we don't want an arborvitae or something in there, right?
Right, we don't want an arborvitae.
All right.
When I, when I drove out there, I didn't go out and actually check the species of the tree, but I'd been out there several times before, and I think they were not pines, I think they were cedars.
Okay. Why, why don't we say cedar, subject to, you know, could be subject to town planner approval or something like that?
Yes, located and approved by town planner. Is that okay, Steve?
I was really speaking to the species, so if Karen gets out there and finds out it's something different that should go in there, that's, that's fine.
Well, I think a cedar, you know, Juniper virginiana, you know, a cedar is a very appropriate species for that area because it's, it's a coast, it's a native plant, it's coastal, and, you know, I, I think it'd be, I think a cedar would be an appropriate species.
Okay. About the, to landscape knowledge.
All right, so it, the final sentence will be replace, replacement of a six-to-eight-foot cedar located and approved by the town planner.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Bourbon? Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hassett.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is an A and R for 67 Collier Road. And who is here to present that?
I believe that it's Mr. Marabito, so we'll just need to give him a moment to unmute himself instead.
Panayon, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. I'm also on with Jeff Delisi, I don't know if he's on yet.
He's there.
Mr. Delisi, there we go, Mr. Delisi's on the line as well, then.
Hey, everybody.
Is there anyone else that we need to have? Open for discussion?
I think the applicant is Ken Conway, and I suppose if he needs to say anything, he could be promoted into the conversation now.
Okay.
Also, I, I'm not sure how confident Paul is with sharing his screen, but if I happen to have the plan up on my screen, if he's gonna present it, it might be helpful.
Yes, I can share it, Jeff, just give me a second.
That's fine, it's just an A and R plan, so I'm just gonna sit back and let Paul.
Actually, you can go ahead, you've been made a co-host, so you can go ahead and share your plan.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful, Jeff, if you just showed, showed the plan, just so everybody understands what we're talking about.
Couldn't agree more.
I think it'd make it easier for Paul to explain.
Agreed. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
You can all see it.
So, let me just jump in here. So, our client, my client is purchasing Lot A, which has an existing dwelling on it. The seller is Mr. Conway, who also owns back here in, in a different entity. And the subject of this application is this lot behind the house lot and behind remaining land of Mr. Conway. So the concept would be to divide the land behind here. So it's to create parcel A and parcel B. Parcel A is a non-buildable lot, it only, it only has 900 square feet or so of upland, and it's to be combined with Lot A. And then parcel B is to remain in the ownership of Mr. Conway's entity and to be combined with his remaining land over here. So the concept would be, create parcel A so as to sell it to my client along with Lot A. And the note down here, note number nine indicates that it's not a build, parcel A is not a buildable lot, and is to be combined with Lot A, and parcel B is not a buildable lot and is to be combined with the remaining land of Mr. Conway's entity. And it looks like there's a Z-line right here and a Z-line over here. I guess the only feature, you know, obviously, there's frontage on Collier Road. There's an existing retaining wall, this is on Third Cliff, which is basically a seawall. A, a, a short distance into the lot that is presently being divided. On the west side of the wall obviously is, is lawn or upland, and on the east side is typical with Situate, is all, you know, is obviously wet. So, I kind of jumped in on Paul, but that's how I see it. Seem, I don't know if you guys have any questions for Paul?
Karen?
So I said, we've got comments from the water department, I think sewer department and Conservation Commission, and the wetlands here have not been delineated. I think that we're going to be telling all surveyors from in the future, because it is part of the regulations, they need to be going to the Conservation Commission first to get their wetland and the resource areas delineated. However, I do not believe that it's a fatal flaw. I believe that this lot has frontage and is at, and has access and is endorseable, but I'm going to tell the board, it does not meet your regulations that you, that under the subdivision rules and regs for an A and R plan.
Thank you. Do we need to read the letters from the different departments, Karen? Probably, read them into the record?
You can read them into the record, they're just, you know, basically alerting them that they're going to have to pay water and sewer fees.
Okay.
That's not really germane to an A and R.
No, it isn't, no, so we'll let that go.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
And the Conservation Commission commented that nothing's been before, not, they have not determined the resource areas.
Yes, that's germane, and
Yes.
Can I ask a question about parcel A? So, so we're creating parcel A, but it, it doesn't have frontage?
No, it's being, it's being combined with Lot A. And when we
You're not creating a separate lot?
No.
No, it's a parcel, which is being combined with, with Lot A, where the house is, and when those two are combined, then that, that entire property, which is 30,000 square feet, has this frontage on Collier Road.
I guess I'm asking you, it looks like in this map, you have a Lot A and a parcel A.
Yes.
So I don't see one parcel A, I guess, is what I'm saying. From Collier Road all the way back.
Parcel A is out in the salt marsh, it's labeled in the salt marsh. Parcel A is primarily salt marsh, it's 20,000 square feet. And that's, that's gonna be add, that'll be added to and be combined with the lot where the house is.
So why, why doesn't that show here?
It does show there, there's a Z-line, and there's also note number nine says parcel A and B are division of the third parcel in the deed. Says parcel A is not a buildable lot and is to be combined with Lot A. So once you combine parcel A with Lot A, then you have a total lot area of 30,000 square feet with this frontage on Collier Road.
So this, this plan is making that combination?
Yes.
So it's a single lot from Collier Road all the way back?
Yes.
Yes. And it's got, it already had, I mean, it has 10,000 square feet of upland in the, in the Lot A area. Plus a little bit additional upland in the parcel A area.
Right. But it
Everything to the concrete retaining wall is upland.
Yeah, but effectively, it's one parcel, one lot.
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's what I was asking, and the same thing for what looks like parcel B, that is all gonna be sort of Lot B? Or, or where is that called out?
Note number nine, the last sentence, says that parcel B is not a buildable lot and is to be combined with the remaining land of an entity, that's the applicant's entity, which over here is identified remaining land of that entity. So, that's where that's called out.
Well, that's, that's two entities there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Your note says one entity. Moon Custer Acquisitions LLC.
Sure, yeah. I'm not certain exactly, hold on, let me, I don't have the deed in front of me of that particular parcel because I was focused on the other parcel. Oh, no, I do have the deed, so that's correct, the, the title owner of the, the applicant's property, and, and, and this here, obviously, is part of that, is Moon Custer Acquisitions LLC and Moon and Stars LLC. So, the fact that Paul, he should have, he should have added that second entity right there, and I, I think, I think we, we would, that's just a typographical error, we'd be happy to write it in with a a Sharpie, which is something that's done when there's typographical errors on my laws.
Okay, that would be okay.
You wouldn't object if we write "and" Moon and Stars LLC?
Not at all, not at all.
Okay.
I have a question. You have, the existing house is 87 Collier Road, and the other lot, will that have a new number on it?
What other, there, there's no proposed house to be constructed on this lot over here at, at the, at the present time. The, the concept behind this is, is simply to divide it so the land behind the existing dwelling could be combined and sold to a third party, my client.
I understand that, but we have parcel Lot A combined with parcel A, which is 87 Collier, and then we also have Moon and Stars and Moon Custer Acquisitions that are also combined with parcel B that are 87 Collier. Wait a minute, I stand corrected?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, okay. And this one is? All 67 Collier.
Yeah. So, I, I, because you're dividing off a dwelling off of a larger parcel, the dwelling is gonna retain its number typically in, and then the other remaining parcel is gonna be assigned a new tax identification number. Whether it's assigned an address that corresponds to that new number, I don't know, but that's really, I think, a DPW least fiery issue.
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I just, on the question of the, the showing of the wetland area on the plans, I just wanted to jump in on that, on that issue and just give my, my two senses. I, I would think that since, since the Planning Board's only focus with A and R plans is access and vital access, which is part of frontage, so frontage, which includes vital access. I would think that the only reason why a Planning Board would ever need for purposes of an A and R plan, a delineation before an A and R plan endorsement occurs would be if there's any possibility that there would be a wet area that would make the frontage illusory such that it, it would be unable to access the buildable portion of the lot. So I just, I, Ben used the word onerous on the prior, on the prior application. In my opinion, and you, you didn't ask, but I'm giving it to you, is that it may make sense to have a little flexibility with that provision. I don't know why there would be a requirement written into the subdivision regulations that says that in an A and R situation, you have to get a delineation before you even divide land. Unless there's a possibility that the wet area prevents access such that frontage doesn't effectively exist as frontage, that's, that's my two thoughts there.
Well, and I appreciate your thoughts, but these subdivision rules and regulations have been in effect since 2003, last modified in 2010, and the Planning Board has been very lenient on this, and we have been discussing it, and it's, it's time to start taking a hard stand on things sometimes.
I've said my piece, I just, just, I appreciate
It's all well and good to say, oh, oh, there's not an issue there, but all we're seeing is a piece of paper. And we're saying that what's on the piece of paper represents what's true out there. And if nobody's delineated the wetlands, there's no way for us to know one way or the other whether there's, there's actually, you know, a, a lucery access, if you will.
Well, Steve, I neglect
Let me just finish, please. If you require that people delineate the wetlands on each, on each A and R, then there's no doubt. So I think that's really a, a reason why this, this probably exists that way.
Okay.
I did go out and take pictures, and there, I mean, in this case, in this case, I do agree with what's shown on the plan is what is actually out in the field. That concrete wall pretty much delineates the edge of the salt marsh. And I will try in the future to send, or perhaps the applicants would be willing to submit photographs of their sites.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you should have to, I mean, we're talking about approval not required.
Right, I, I understand, I understand.
I don't think you should have to, you know, necessarily traipse out to each one of these. It's, I think it's the reason why the wetlands delineation was a required part of the submittal. If there is a, if there's a modification to that somehow via submittal of photographs or photographic evidence or something like that, then, then maybe that's an acceptable alternative, but.
Okay, are we all set? I move to endorse this approval not required, a plan of land in the town of Situate, Mass, 67 Collier Road. Standby Paul J. Marabito, Registered Land Surveyor of Ross Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant-owner Moon Custer Acquisitions LLC and Moon and Stars LLC, as the division of attractive land shown on the accompanying, accompanying plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Collier Road. Planning Board of endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to the conformance with zoning regulations. Is there a second?
For, for discussion, Anna, I ju, I just noticed something that I just, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding this right, but so, i, is the, is the parcel B is to be combined with this other piece of land, that's correct?
Yes.
The existing dwelling on what's called Lot A, so this lot line here in the middle, old lot 193, old lot 194, is that lot line being created, or is that currently existing?
So, so
Lots on the 1906 plan?
Yeah, so, so the, let's call it the overall, because we're, we're talking about multiple, we're talking about a portion of a, a, a plan here that is the subject of the application, and then we're talking about down here, which is not being divided, so to speak, and then we're talking over here, which is not being divided.
So, so here, here in, here in lies my question, I'll just ask it, because what I'm wondering is if we're, if, if, by doing this, you're creating a buildable lot here, are you also not making the existing dwelling on Lot A non-conforming as the side yard setback?
No, so Lot A is a merged parcel of, of 194 and 195, which are lots that are currently shown on a record 1901 plan on Third Cliff. The dwelling at 167, Paul, can you, could you answer that? I believe that it has a side yard setback of 12 feet, and that eight feet are required in this zoning district, so there's no non-conformity that's being created.
Okay, so the, so the deck and the stairwell is not considered encroachment into that?
Right, if it were covered, it would. Open decks are not counted for setbacks.
I guess the stairs might be encroaching, but that can be up to the new people to decide.
Right, exactly, they're gonna need to either remove that encroachment or just grant an easement, but it's not a setback requirement.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, there's kind of a lot going on.
No, that's a, it's a great question, Ben, I hadn't, I hadn't even thought of that.
But also too, Jeff, looking at this plan, on the right-hand side, it's eight feet, which is the set, side setback that actually goes through the house.
Yeah, and that's, that's not uncommon in, in the town, on the right side over here. On the right side over here, this is what you're talking about, Ann.
Yes.
We're not, we're not, the division isn't creating this, this setback non-conformity. So the house at sixty-seven Collier is a, is a pre-existing non-conforming.
All right.
Welling at four point nine feet.
Right, and that.
Okay, got it.
Not changing.
The bill, the building, that this depicts the building envelope, this depicts the setback.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, we next have a discussion and vote for surety for eighteen Ford Place.
Just give me one moment. Mr. McGill is the applicant. I'm just giving him permission to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. McGill, is there anyone else that you need to have available for a comment?
No.
Okay.
All right. We have your estimate and we have our estimate from Mr. Chesia. And the bottom line is, we are asking for one hundred thousand dollars in surety to go forward with this project. Karen?
That's the bottom line, John. Mr. McGill provided an estimate. John Chesia found a few items that weren't in the estimate and added a contingency like you do, like you have on all your surety estimates.
All right, further comments?
Can I, is that include me?
Yes, that include you.
All right, so I just want to touch on a couple of things that, you know, the first one, which Bob Galvin touched on in the meeting, that requiring a surety for this project, it's unenforceable by the planning board, it's unenforceable by the town. You can't come on private property to complete the work, which what's the surety is for. So it just doesn't, it's, there's no reason for it. And my second question would be, why was my, what parameters did my project meet that the other projects in that area didn't meet that required me to have a surety and them not?
Karen?
Well, when we've, when we've done special permits and the, under the village business overlay district and the VCN, we, we require surety. Site plan approval indicates that you can have a surety. And during the public hearing, the planning board said that they wanted a surety. And that's why there's a surety for this.
Again, my question is, what parameters did my project meet that the others didn't in my area that required me to provide a hundred thousand dollar surety?
You, we conditioned that as part of the project.
But that's, but that's not my, that's not my question. My question is, what parameters? Why my project and why not the one right next to me? What, what's the difference between the two? What parameters did mine meet that theirs did not?
We take each project on its own, and so this is, this is your project.
Right, so what were the parameters that you took that my project met to require me to provide a hundred thousand dollar surety?
We need this.
That administrative review.
That doesn't really answer the question.
So are you, are you saying you don't, you don't want your special permit?
No, I'm saying that.
Then you're way too late to bring this up, right?
Well, no, this was brought up at the last meeting. This was brought up by Bob Galvin at the, at the meeting. It has nothing to do with not wanting the special permit. It's that you're requiring me to buy something that's unenforceable that.
The special permit has this condition.
Right, but my question is, is what are the parameters of a special permit? What did I meet that my next door neighbor did not meet that I'm required?
I don't know about your next door neighbor or anything else. We're just talking about yours. And if your special permit had this condition, that's the condition. You want to go back and relitigate it?
No, but I'm, I don't want to relitigate it. And then I think I've made this clear at the last meeting. I just don't understand if it's unenforceable, it's just me spending more money for, you know, no reason.
Can we hold off on all of this and, and anything else and get a legal opinion on this?
Well, see, that's the problem, though. That's threatening my, my, you're holding up the project or I have to accept it. So, and I will, and I will, I will take your, I will.
No.
I will continue, I will accept it. That's fine. I, I understand that, you know, obviously the project has to go forward and I have to accept that. So, but I, I do, if I have to accept it, I also have, I have a request. The fifty thousand dollars, the first fifty thousand dollars for the drainage, that's something that's going to be completed in the first month of the project. The landscaping is going to be next spring because I'm not going to be able to plant, have this project completed and planted by the winter before the end of the, you know, planting season. So to hold up a hundred thousand dollars for really twenty-five thousand dollars, I would request if I have to do the surety and it's voted, I have to get a surety, that I can release that the, you know, after Mr. Chesia does his review and it's, and it states that I've completed the drainage, that I can do partial release of the bond. So I'm not carrying interest into another year for the entire amount.
I think you can always come back and ask for surety reductions at the appropriate time. I, I would say that if, you know, if you finish the stormwater comport, component and haven't done the landscaping, just better be sure that there's, there's no possibility of of any erosion or drainage that, that affects the stormwater system. So you'll have to have control measures in place to make sure that doesn't happen.
Understood.
All right.
Yeah, and also Karen, if you can have him correct the amount, I think Mr. Chessy inverted his numbers on the excavating portion. It was, it's forty-six nine hundred, not forty-nine six hundred.
I'm not going to change his work. I don't think it, I mean, the board, the board has a motion before it for a hundred, for a hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's what, that's the pretend, that's what we're going to be voting on tonight. John, do you think it makes a big difference?
Are you asking me?
No, I said, John, do you think it makes a big difference? Planning Board, do you think it makes a big difference?
No.
So, I mean, that's, the board has to decide on that.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand the comment. So could you tell me what, what are you talking about here?
Just the total. I, I, the total on Mr. Chessy is, he just, it, it's the, the first amount for Tri-County excavating was, it's forty-six thousand nine hundred, not forty-nine thousand six hundred.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's all.
So it's a, it's like three thousand dollars difference?
Correct.
Well, on this piece of paper, we have forty-nine six. Are you, there's another piece of paper that says forty-six nine that we don't have?
On the Tri-County.
Was that another, something that was submitted?
I gave, I sent the board Mr. McGill's estimate and then I sent the board John, John Chesia's commentary on his estimate.
All right.
Yeah, his estimate says forty-six thousand nine hundred.
So it's up to the board if you want to take three thousand dollars off of a hundred thousand dollars. Up to the board.
All right, people, what do you want to do? Do you want?
It's fine with me.
That's okay with me. We can make it ninety-seven.
Fine, we'll change this to ninety-seven. All right. I move that the surety for eighteen Ford Place for the site plan administrator review and special permit for density be set at ninety-seven thousand dollars based on the applicant's estimates, estimate for construction costs and reviewed by the town's consulting engineer, John Chesia, who added additional items and a contingency. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you.
Let me just say one thing. The town accepts, will accept a bond or cash surety. We don't accept tri-pi-tri agreements. So it's up to Mr. McGill to determine what type, I mean, a bond or cash, but not a tri-partite.
All right, our next item is continuation of a public hearing, special permit accessory dwelling at one twenty-nine Stockbridge Road. And I have a motion. I, I move to accept the applicant's request for continuance of the accessory dwelling public hearing for one twenty-nine Stockbridge Road until May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at six forty-five PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. McLean, you'll be voting on this because you voted for the last time. Ms. Lewis, you were absent for this hearing. So Mr. McLean, thank you. Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
And Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
All right, we now have in front of us minutes and we have none. Okay, and accounting. Move to approve the requisition of eleven dollars and two cents to WB Mason for office supplies, three hundred seven dollars to Harriman Associates for consultation on the master plan, or one hundred thirty-one dollars and four cents to Gatehouse Media for legal ad for one twenty-nine Stockbridge Road, for one hundred thirty-one dollars and four cents to Gatehouse Media for legal ad for sixty, we've got this twice. It's only once, right? All right, for legal ad for sixty-three Situate Avenue, for forty dollars to Rockland Trust for payment of training webinar for Clyde Boyd and Karen Joseph. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
The next item, layers on reports. Does anybody have any layers on business?
Just a question for Ben. We can still provide comments on this plan?
Oh, yeah, that, that's the intent. I think you all should have got a message, I think, from Emily yesterday or the day before. So, yeah, you have till the twenty-sixth, but that's the, that's the hard stop is the twenty-sixth, so Monday.
I attended traffic rules Monday night and they granted, approved unanimously a curb cut at one fifteen Grove Street. And they will send a note to the planning board that the trees that we were looking for will be provided basically outside the, the right of way. And then there was a curb cut at one sixty-six Branch Street to enable a circular driveway to be put in to facilitate getting in and out of the house. This is not a scenic road, so that was approved as well. So that was that. And then I went to CPC last week and we had one application for eleven Pineview Drive, which is off of First Parish Road for a lot of land that the proponent of the, would like CPC and/or the town to purchase. That he was saying that it's worth two hundred thousand dollars when in fact, he went before the zoning board of appeals back in September and was denied a section six. So I'm not sure how valuable this piece of property is to the town of Situate. So he will be coming back in May to discuss this further with CPC. Anything else from anybody? Okay, all right, planning and development report?
All right, I've got an update on several things. Well, seventeen A is going well. I was out there today approving stake locations for the landscaping for the trees. I'm going back out there next week when they actually get the landscape stock in. They'll place them before they dig the holes, just to make sure that everything is okay. I was out at Toll Brothers today for almost two hours. We were doing test pits. We did test pits in three of the basins. All the basins have been mucked up. And so three of the basins are going to be repaired this spring. But we were doing test pits to determine the extent of contamination and then come up with a plan of action for that. They've also started the drainage work on Heatherly Road. They have to put drainage structures in at the old low point in the road. And then they'll be doing the curb and as part of the special permit, they have to do, they have to grind it down and do an overlay. And they will also be doing an old pulverizing sixth valve in doing that. So things are progressing out there. You know, where I sign off on building permits and occupancy permits regularly. Curious Estates, we continue to have problems with every single occupancy permit. And, you know, I signed off on one today after delaying it for a couple of weeks. We have endorsement stuff in for the gas backwards. I'll review it next week. And so I'm going to imagine that that may be on the next agenda. But I'll have to review and see where we are on that. We have a major site plan in for Inlee School. They want to add a toddler facility, convert an existing single-family home into a toddler facility. That'll, that'll be probably on May twenty-seventh. My understanding was when Widow's Walk came in, in December, that there was no increase in the parking. There's still no increase in the parking, but they intend to be kind of revamping the paving and adding a little drainage. My understanding was the board did not want to see that, that it was in conservation's jurisdiction. Am I correct?
That, that's kind of how, what I remember.
Yeah.
Okay, just double checking here. The town is going to be submitting comments by May first for two, to mass housing for two project eligibility applications. And so there seems to be a lot of misconception out there. They have not been granted project eligibility yet. The town is, we're still in the comment period. The town submits the comments. Then mass housing is going to review the applications. Then they issue a project eligibility letter. And then they're able to file with the zoning board of appeals.
So, Karen, can you, you said two projects. What projects are we talking about?
We're talking about Bartlett Fields. That's two hundred sixty-eight units off of Chief Justice Pushing Highway. And the other one is the cottages at Old Oak and Bucket. It's thirty-four basically duplex and single-family off of Old Oak and Bucket Road. That's going to be ownership, so only nine. so only nine units would count towards the subsidized housing inventory if this project proceeded forward.
And, and does, does the planning board have an opportunity to submit comments before the May deadline?
I submitted comments to the town administrator.
Does the, can the planning board submit comments?
Um, it's usually the department heads who submit the comments. I mean, once he gives me the okay, I can, um, show you the letter. I commented on, I, I, I thought I sent what I comment, my comment letter to you. I thought, I, I commented on, uh, the water, and I know Sean Anderson commented on the water. I commented that, you know, it was very dense, that, you know, they portrayed Old Oak and Bucket as a walkable road, and Old Oak and Bucket Road is not a walkable road, and it's not located near a village, um, center. Um, and I thought that the development was very dense. But I can tell you that, uh, based on the sidewalk with mass housing, since the town is below 10%, they will probably both get project eligibility letters and be able to file with the ZBA.
And what defines whether a project's eligible or not?
What defines if a project's eligible for what?
For, from mass housing. What, what are, what, what's the crit, is there a criteria, set of criteria?
Um, they, they look at, um, they look at, is this, you know, is, does the owner have site control? Is it a certain one of these entities? They look at, is the project, uh, project reasonable for the area? Is it, um, does it, is it going to supply the housing need?
I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, 260 units, I think it's folly to assume that we have the infrastructure capacity for that. And I, I, I don't know what the final verbiage going in is going to be, but I, I would say we have to be very strong against that.
Um, and I believe the town administrator was commenting, they, you know, he excerpted right from the water department's, you know, letter to him that they, we don't, in seasonal demand, we don't have all the capacity. There's shortages, there's, uh, problems with, you know, some wells being offline, and then there's these testing requirements, um, that they did, they just don't, where we don't have the capacity. He's, he's saying that. He is, he is saying that.
Okay, could we see the, whatever the draft looks like?
I will send it to you.
Yeah.
And the other thing that you need to keep in mind is if they get this project eligibility letter, they have, um, ZBA has four, 30 days to schedule at the first hearing, to open a hearing, and then 180 days for review and what have you. Um, the town will require, I am sure, um, a peer, peer review, which will be paid for by the applicant, and there are some major issues that are facing the town, and Steve is absolutely right, it's water. We also have traffic, which is horrific over on Route 3A, so these are different things that will be, um, dealt with in terms of the zoning board of appeals. Am I correct, Karen?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think what would make sense is to be very firm and very direct in our comments to mass, mass housing, so it, it doesn't even reach the zoning board of appeals.
Well, see, that's very unlikely that that's going to happen.
Doesn't, no, uh, that, that may or may not be, may or may not happen, but, you know, I guess I, I would be a proponent of being very firm about it with mess. None of this sort of, you know, wishy-washy, oh, we have a, you know, a, a well offline and we have capacity problems sometimes. I think it, it ought to be very direct and very firm. I mean, we, we've just gone through, I don't know, five consecutive years of, you know, water, of water control that basically says nobody can water their lawns, they can't, they can barely wa- water their shrubs, and we're talking about 260 additional units. And it, it's complete folly, and, and we should say so right up front.
All right, your point is well taken. Karen, you're going to send him a copy of the, uh, draft?
Yeah, I'll get permission from Jim first.
Okay, all right.
And then Ann and I did do a, a 40B webinar last night, and, um, you know, it was very good. I sent some of the, um, some of the documents that they had provided to me through a Dropbox. I sent them over to the, um, ZBA today.
And the person that really has to, to shepherd this through from the planning board aspect is the planning director. It's very important, and as was said last night, the worst thing you can do is go in and say it's too dense and you can't do it. We have to have strategize, we'll get, uh, an attorney and so on, but this, this most likely, because of where we are, regardless of the issues that we have right now, most likely will be reverted that to the zoning board of appeals. Probably in two or three months, so we'll have to wait and see what happens. And it's, you know, the 268 on, um, Route 3A, and then there's another 34, so we're looking at 300 units basically in this town.
Yeah.
Potential, and that, that's a tremendous amount.
We don't have the capacity. I think, I think it's pretty clear.
Plus everything in the pipeline already.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
So, yeah, it's, I, I think at least from a planning perspective and a planning board perspective, right? We should, we should take a pretty firm stand on this, and, and nobody may listen to us, right? They rarely listened to us in the past at the, at the zoning board, but I don't think that should mean we, we don't say anything.
No, and I think that we will comment, I mean, if it makes it to the zoning board, we will comment, and the zoning board chair has already basically said he's going to be relying on comments from other, other boards and committees.
Yeah.
So there you have it. Anything else, Karen? Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Anybody with anything? All right, it's 7:30, the bewitching hour. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move.
Second.
Ms. Burbine.
Yes.
Ms. Lampert.
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard.
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yep.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Thank you all in favor unanimous.